I want to call the Hopkinton Town Council meeting of June 16th, 2014 to order with a moment of silent meditation and salute to the flag.
Oh, forget it. It's down there.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I move that we move the discussion, consider vote, reference the possible negotiation of the Hopkinton Post Office leasing agreement in exchange for the post office remaining open to the beginning of the agenda before the hearing.
Second.
Well, we have to vote on that first. Oh, okay. Motion made in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move that we enter into Executive Session 42465A5 for a discussion related to leasing of publicly held real property.
Concerning this post office item, is that correct?
Yes, concerning this post office item.
Okay. Motion made in second, please.
Will we have discussion after second?
I'll second it. I'll second it for discussion.
Motion made in second. All those in favor?
Uh-uh, discussion.
I'm sorry.
Um, why are we doing this?
Something that's come up, and I think it might be better served to be in Executive Session.
And in that case, we have people here who will be in Executive Session, Nicholas?
No.
I've talked to him.
I already talked to Richard.
And he understands.
See, I made copies of what he provided to council.
Why don't we do it at the end of the meeting instead of at the beginning?
Well, we couldn't because it was listed as an agenda item in the normal business, and we can't, we couldn't commingle the two Executive Sessions, so we have to do it in open session and make it a part of another Executive Session.
Right, but we can't do the Executive Session later on?
No, Pat's leaving at eight. She's having surgery in the morning.
No, Pat's leaving at eight.
So she's leaving, legal's leaving at eight o'clock, so that's why we're doing it now instead of later. What's the difference?
I think it has more to do with the public that came to listen and hear.
Right.
And we have public here, we have, so I just want to make sure that they are served and we are not suddenly taking something that they're interested in, moving it into Executive Session when it was never supposed to be. It was in open, on an open agenda. I want to make sure that the public is served, and that means, I don't know how many people who is here for this particular item. Is it only Richard?
Who's here for the post office?
Just Richard.
Just Richard. And we explained when you need to go share.
We'll report out too.
Well, I think the discussion is more important than the vote, but nonetheless, Richard knows about it. There isn't anyone else here who is here specifically for that meeting, then that's fine.
This is not to deny us talking about it as an agenda item also, right?
Yes.
Possibly. It is.
Yeah, it'll make more sense when we're...
Can we go into Executive Session?
Okay. I'm willing to listen.
Okay. Um, yes.
Yes.
Sure.
Yes.
We'll be right back.
It only takes minutes.
Two minutes.
No idea. No idea.
If they were working, they'd be missing. No, we're good. We're all good. Thank you. 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 We're actually late. Thank you. This is a question. What's Frank doing?
Now, secure.
Frank, you're gonna talk to Richard?
Of course I want. Mm-hmm.
Bill, don't mention any fellow from off the right of the letter.
Move that we reconvene as council and seal the Executive Session minutes.
Second.
Motion made in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I just want to report out our discussion of the post office in Hopkinton City, that we are going to ask that the town manager send a letter to the authorities at the post office to try and keep the post office open at least six hours. Thoughts are now that they may reduce it to four. The postmaster will lose her job, and I think a lot of services will be cut as well. So we're gonna hopefully get them to change their mind, and that would also include up to including a rent reduction if that makes a difference, so...
And that's for the Hopkinton?
And that's for the Hopkinton City post office right here. Okay.
Move that we move the financial resolutions to the top of the agenda.
Second.
Motion made in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I just want to report out our discussion of the post office in Hopkinton City, that we are going to ask that the town manager send a letter to the authorities at the post office to try and keep the post office open at least six hours. Thoughts are now that they may reduce it to four. The postmaster will lose her job, and I think a lot of services will be cut as well. So we're gonna hopefully get them to change their mind, and that would also include up to including a rent reduction if that makes a difference, so...
And that's for the Hopkinton?
And that's for the Hopkinton City post office right here. Okay.
Move that we move the financial resolutions to the top of the agenda.
Second.
Motion made in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Yes.
Move that we adopt Resolution Number One.
Second.
Okay. Motion made in second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Move that we adopt Resolution Number Two.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any discussion? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Move that we adopt Resolution Number Three.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Move that we adopt Resolution Number Four.
Second.
All those in favor? Motion made in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Move that we adopt Resolution Number Five.
Second.
Motion made in second. All those, any further discussion? No?
No. I'm sorry.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Yeah. I'm gonna read these quickly, folks. I probably should have had that done prior to Sylvia's motion.
I think the big one is this first one.
You have Town of Hopkinton, Rhode Island, financial resolutions. Resolution Number One is resolved in accordance with Rhode Island General Laws 44-5-2C4 that the electors of the Town of Hopkinton qualified to vote on any proposal to impose a tax or for the expenditure of money in the financial town referendum lawfully assembled on the 10th day of June 2014 and adopted a budget for the fiscal year 2014-2015. The estimated tax rate for the real and tangible property is $20.64, an increase of .87 over the current rate of 1977. The tax rate for motor vehicles is 2118. Resolution Number Two resolved.
Could you explain to them that when, that originally it was 2124?
Yeah, originally, when the...
The estimated tax rate?
The taxpayers voted on the budget, the proposed tax rate was 2124. We realized through the assessed values of the property, I guess a certain portion of them increasing, I think, right?
Yes.
Increasing, that some extra revenue, I guess, for lack of a better word, was realized in further reducing the tax rate 60 cents from the initial 2124. So it's good news for the residents. Resolution Number Two resolved that the Town Finance Director be and is hereby authorized and empowered to credit to any appropriations fund, any receipts or donations which apply against that fund and all others not so designated to the general fund. Resolution Number Three resolved that the several appropriations specified be expended under the direction and supervision of the Town Council, except those pertaining to public school, bills payable, and interest which some shall be dispersed and paid out by the Town Finance Director. Resolution Number Four resolved that the Town Finance Director of the Town of Hopkinton be and is hereby authorized and empowered to borrow upon the credit of the town as the same may be necessary during the present fiscal year such sum or sums as may be required to meet the expenses and obligations of the town, provided, however, that such loans shall not be, shall not at any time exceed the sum of $1,500,000. Resolution Number Five resolved that the over expenditures in the 2013-14 fiscal year budget identified by the Town Finance Director are hereby approved. Resolutions adopted in June 16th, 2014. Okay.
Move that we sit as a licensing board?
Second.
Oh, 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 wait. I'll withdraw my motion. Sorry.
Withdraw the second.
Okay.
Thank you.
So we have to adopt the tax resolution?
Yes.
Okay. Move that we adopt the tax resolution.
Second.
Okay. Motion made in second. Any discussion, folks? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Now we're not with you. Now we're not.
Move that we sit as a licensing board?
Second.
Okay. Motion made in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Wait a minute. That's not right. I'm just, I'm...
It's on the agenda.
No, 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 but that's, yeah, whatever.
You're opening a public hearing.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Can I withdraw the motion, or do we just leave?
I would.
Okay, thank you.
Can we throw the second?
Yeah, you just opened the hearing, I believe. Yeah.
I thought it says that, I think.
That's what the attorney says.
I know, I know. I shouldn't do that.
Oh, it's on, it's in print, so...
Yeah, I know. But anyway, we just opened the hearing.
Okay.
You withdrawing your motion and all that?
Yes, I did.
Yes.
All right, I'm gonna skip out then. It's about the seat.
All right, first up...
Good night.
Good night, Pat. Good luck.
Good luck with that. Locking big kid.
This is the second community development block grant hearing. Open a public, second public hearing on the 2014 community development block grant application. Mr. Marshant?
Mr. Lantham.
Mr. Lantham.
Thank you, Jeff. Okay, this is the second public hearing on the CDBG application this year. It's the point in time when we invite applicants to come in and present their proposal. It's also the time when the Town Council ranks the proposals and adjust the dollar amount if necessary or if desired. And back on April 30th, I gave the council a memo that included all nine of the requests from outside agencies, okay? You have not seen the four requests that came from the town itself, and they are for Langworthy Field, $102,000, the Crandall House Generator for $85,000, Revitalization Management for the Hope Valley Revitalization Area, $5,000, and Townwide Housing Rehabilitation. Now, in the packet that I gave you a month or so ago, I had two projects there. One was for our rental rehab program that we got funded for $40,000 a couple of years ago. That actually comes under the umbrella of Townwide Housing Rehabilitation. And I did not put in for any particular dollar amount with that item because we apply for those funds throughout the year on an as-needed basis, and we can, we can apply for whatever we need at that point in time. So, but it is on there for prioritization. It's important to do that. So, the application really consists of 13 items this year. Townwide Housing Rehabilitation Program, Crandall House Generator, $85,000 I put in for. And while we're talking about that, I also have that put in under the CDBG Hurricane Sandy. We were supposed to hear from the feds back in the month of May as to whether that version three was approved or not. I just spoke with Laura Sullivan today, and she hopes to have word by next week as to how that made out. So I can't wait. I have to assume that it's gonna be deep-sixed, if you will, okay? And I'm putting it in here. Now, we can, it's actually for more money here than it was through there. $55,000 I put in there. We may find we need more, more money to actually do the job. If we don't, and we get it awarded through here, we can probably shift the line item to, let's say, Langworthy Field or to something else we need. But that's something that has to be worked out. Langworthy Field, I put in for $102,000, and that's a guesstimate at this point as to what we would need to go forth with the implementation of the master plan for the park. Right now, I do not have a master plan in my hand. Fussin' O'Neill is working on it. I contacted him last week, and they were on a charrette, and they're supposed to be starting it this week. But it was promised to me a month ago, 'cause I told him I wanted it for this application. But in my narrative to the state, I am, while I'm asking for $102,000, I asked him for a minimum of $14,000. And where I pulled that from, in the month of May, you'd know that we got $24,000 for Langworthy Field from DEM. We have to match that. We can match it with CDBG funds. Last year, we got $10,000. So the 14, I hope to get at least this year, 14 in our 10, that's our $24,000 match. That would give us $48,000 to start some work at Langworthy Field.
Good to do that.
And so that's that. Revitalization Management, Jeff has some ongoing projects. First of all, Langworthy Field would be in that category, his management of that project, as well as his ongoing effort to put a crosswalk in from the fire station to the bakery across the street. That's still, that's still up in the air. We don't know, you know, if we're gonna do it or not, but it's something that he works on. And then, those are the four town-sponsored requests, if you will. The other nine are right there in your packet. The Warm Shelter has put in two requests, one for $9,000 for their job readiness program that they have, getting people ready for the workforce, education, whatnot. And they also have another request for $2,500 to, for operating support for their shelter, their overnight shelter for people who need that. RICAN, the Rhode Island Center, assisting those in need, put in for $3,500 for operating expenses for various forms of professional support that they need, accountants and whatnot. The Domestic Violence Resource Center asked for $1,228 for operating expenses, and we have a representative from that group here today, I know, may want to speak. Welcome House in Peasdale put in for $8,500 for operating expenses, and that, again, is a emergency shelter-type operation. The Johnny Cake Center in Westerly is asking for, they actually asked for $4,518.35. I rounded that up to $4,520, and we have Pat St. Germain from that organization who can speak to their needs as well today. South County Community Action put in for $5,000 for renovations, which include replacing their furnace and gutters and fascia boards and soffit boards on their building in Westerly at Pond Street. The Community Housing Land Trust is asking for $3,000, and what they do is they match up low-mod income people with affordable housing, and they also act as a monitoring agent. They're one of the few monitoring agents in the state for affordable housing. And finally, we have the Washington County Community Development Corporation, who is asking for $10,000. And they are basically, you know, a CDC, Community Development Corporation, they actually develop housing, and they have many housing projects going on in Washington County right now. I don't think they have too much in Hopkinton, but they would be available to help us out if the need arose. And then, there's also $10,000 in the application for administration, which would go to Mr. Marshant, who actually administers this application. There's an awful lot of work that goes along with it, environmental reviews, historic reviews, and they're detailed, they're, it's a lot of work. So, the total package comes to $249,248. We are eligible to apply for $250,000 this year. And so now, I'll leave it up to you folks to have, answer your questions, hear from the audience, prioritize, and adjust.
Hey, Jim, I just had one quick question. Have we heard from the state, I guess, what the emphasis will be this year on the statewide planning? You know, usually they'll have a certain theme, if you will, on what they want to prioritize the money. You know, they'll usually focus on a certain area or areas. Have you heard anything yet from the state on that?
My guess is, because they took some of the CDBG money and made a separate pot out of it, from which we can apply for housing funds throughout the year, that suggests to me that they haven't, they still have a heavy emphasis on housing, because that's almost like a separate category. Jeff can probably, Jeff can probably elaborate on that a little bit further, but that's my guess.
Okay.
I think we have a good application here, and I think the outside agencies should do very well this year because of the 249, there is only $47,000 being asked for from outside agencies. So, there's only, like I said, there's only nine of them there, so...
Yes, any, any questions for Jim, folks?
Yeah. Jim, on these two, these two items, the townwide housing rehabilitation station, and also the apartment, or the rental rehabilitation, we've received considerable money in the past for these two items.
Yes.
Do we have, is there any breakdown? Do you have, somebody have a breakdown as to where that money's gone, and to what, what housing units or apartment units? That people could actually, I could look at, and I could drive by and say, wow, that looks really good, and the owner of the real estate job would be having that building?
Absolutely. Jeff Marshant runs the program. It's advertised people of low-mod income who need funds to rehabilitate their homes. I always direct them to Jeff when they come through my office, and then he, he, you know, deals with them. Quite often, there's a waiting list for people to get on.
These aren't homes, these are, these are...
They could be trailers, they're, they're, they're single, you know...
But I'm saying, this isn't a loan, though, this is straight cash. I mean, you're, somebody needs to have new windows put in the house, or something like that.
I believe it's a loan program. It's, I think it's paid back, could be paid back upon sale of the, of the unit if they don't have the funds.
Okay. And where does that money go? Does everyone ask to pay back?
It would go back into the...
Into the program?
Program. Jeff?
When, when money is loaned out through a housing rehabilitation program, and it's either paid back monthly or upon transfer of property, it goes into what they call a program income account that's held in the finance office, it's a restricted account, and then used again.
So the question, I guess my question would be, why are we, why are we continuing to provide funding for these two programs when the money should be, should be a revolving program as far as the money goes? What goes in back, comes back out eventually? We're going to have quite a bit of cash in there to move on to the next fix?
We're, we're not there yet.
Okay. I guess that's why we're doing, at some point, this will probably disappear, then?
In theory, in theory, you can become self-sustaining.
Yeah.
Just, just have money revolve. But, you know, we, we do a fair amount of deferred lending, so people's incomes just won't support any more debt on a revolving basis. So, we've got a fair amount of deferred debt out there.
Now, Jeff, as far as the rental program goes, are we, are we providing a landlord with, with funding to improve his apartments? Is that what we're doing?
That is what the program will do. It's designed to be kind of a two-tiered program. One is a straight, 3% revolving loan to rehabilitate rental property that is qualified to receive the money. The other one is to develop affordable rental units in compliance with state law. I can tell you that I met with the Community Housing Land Trust, what, a couple of weeks ago? Whatever it was. That program's in development because there's a lot of nuance and legal stuff that needs to be, Jim, Jim advised us, to me, with the land trust, come up with an outline of a program. Take it to the Affordable Housing People Committee, let them go through it, and then bring it to council for finalization. We have to work with Pat on that.
Do we, do we have a list of, of the houses that have been rehabbed in the town under this program?
Yes, if you look at the quarterly reports that Agnes receives, there's a list of properties in there by fiscal year that receive funds through this program.
Thanks, Dave. Bye.
I actually have a question, number of questions on some of the others. I am glad that it's to be decided on housing and rental rehabilitation. I think we need both of them, but I assume that's going to be going through CDBG as a lump now, rather than as separated out into different towns. I don't have a problem with that, I just hope that we do have the money, especially for rental rehabilitation. The Crandall House Generator, Langworthy Field improvements, I'm really glad we have Langworthy Field, it's kind of first on my list, because I'd really like to see that improved. I have some questions for some of the others, and I don't know who's here from where, but you said, I think, Domestic Violence Resource Center is here?
Yes.
Okay. Can you come up to the microphone? Actually, the, the reason I'm interested in that is, I, we have it down here for $1,228.
Yes.
I would like to see that raised. I don't know how the rest of this council feels about it, but I would like to see that amount, the operating support, added to, to at least $5,000. I mean, I think that you do an enormously good job. I think you have been doing some renovation of your centers.
Yes.
And, and I think that if you could tell us a little bit more about it, I'd really like to see that go up to $5,000 from $1,228. I think you could use more of it in operating support. And we have worked with Warm Shelter and Johnny Cake, you know, for a very long time, but I think that domestic violence has been sort of on a back burner, and I'd like to see it moved forward a bit. Whether I take that from, you know, Washington County CDC, I think last year we gave them $2,500, they're at $10,000. I'd really like to see money going to domestic violence, so I'm just letting you guys know that, and maybe you can tell us more about the program.
Well, what I could say about the program is, the reason that the request was $1,228 was because, at this point, it appears that we have 4% of our population is from Hopkinton. Although, I, I can say, working in direct services, we get a lot of calls, we're not identifying where the calls are coming, we're seeing, I work also at the court, we're seeing a lot more arrests occurring in this town. That's not such a good thing, but the police department is doing a great job, and I'm sure that's due to the population increasing in your area. So, our program, the particular request was for the residential program in terms of doing case management, and our, our hope is to improve the chances of an individual to be self-sufficient, not to return to an abusive relationship because they can't afford to have a home, or they can't, or they need someone for childcare. So, case management is crucial in terms of helping people to make change. So, that, but again, the request was based on what we see as the population.
Yeah, I actually appreciate it, because you're actually very honest about your population, which hasn't always happened in the past, not for domestic. But I actually appreciate the fact that you use it according to exactly how many, but I think that there's an extended use, that I would like to see domestic, the Domestic Violence Resource Center having a little more operating support, because I do think that our town is really relatively safe, but we do have domestic violence, a little DUI, and I think those are the, the calls, the phone calls, because you may not get the person, but you may get the phone calls, and so I'd really like to see that go up to $5,000.
Well, we certainly would appreciate it. I'm not sure what else you want me to say, though, in terms of what the program can offer. I mean, I've been there for almost 18 years, and I'm very committed to the work that we do, so...
Yeah, I know, I think Sylvia had asked for more earlier, where, and we couldn't give it to you, but I'd like to see it done now. And then I have a question for Johnny Cake. Is Johnny Cake here?
Y'all said, "Thank you."
Thank you very much, yes. And so, the, we certainly like the Johnny Cake Center, we have done...
Yeah.
How do you want to do that?
Yeah, we should just, if we had any questions, and just...
Oh, okay.
Yeah, because she's going to have to keep going every time we want to talk.
Sure.
Could you come on up? And then we can finish with you.
That would, that would be fine.
Yeah.
That's great.
Do we want to increase the allocation to these folks?
Absolutely.
Okay. To what degree? You want to take...
I, I usually want $5,000, but, because I really think that we haven't supported them a lot in the past, and I do think it's something that we do have, happens in this town. We really are minor crimes, but our minor crimes are things like...
Well, so much is still unreported, so I, I agree, there probably is a lot more than you, you realize, but...
Right. So, I am, I am very happy if it's $5,000. I don't know if Sylvia or David has any other things...
You're fine with $5,000?
Yes.
Okay. I'm fine with it. Where do we take it from?
I would happily take it from Washington County CDC.
Is anyone here from W., Washington County? Oh, that's Jeff.
And we gave...
Oh, she's going to want to do that, too.
Yeah, they're going to want it. But last year, they had $2,500.
I'm meeting Melinda before it begins.
No, you can't take it from there.
Why?
Am I going to have a debate with you, Jeff?
No. I just wanted to ask the council if they got that recent memo from Chief Stanley on the Rockville Mill?
No.
No.
All right, it's, it's, I got it this morning, it was mailed to you, so it's somewhere. If that gets fixed, it'll be Washington County CDC that fixes it.
Well, but last year, Washington County CDC got $2,500. So, I don't mind if $2,000 gets taken from Washington County CDC, and something gets taken from something else.
$37.72 is what we're looking at.
Well, I have a question for you, Jeff. When we increase an amount, normally we do look elsewhere, but there's nothing to preclude us from sending an application that actually asks for more than $250,000.
Yeah, it's, it's bad...
They're not going to fund $250,000 anyway.
It's bad manners, though.
Bad manners? They don't like that.
Well, you know, they give you a limit. We end up, we're going to end up, because of the housing rehabilitation set aside, that we will access over the course of the year, whatever award they give you will go up over time, anyway. So, you're right, they have not ever funded anybody in full, but to ask for more, they're, that's really...
All right, but we want to find $37.72 from somewhere.
Well, why don't we talk to the...
Take it from where I can. I take it from where I can.
Well, I want...
It's $3,500 right there.
The, the RICAN, I've looked back years, because I've got all of them here, go back to 2009. I don't know if I had $2,000. They didn't exist that, back that far. But as far as I could go back, and when RICAN has asked for money, they've never been funded. I don't know why, but we put in for them every year, and they've never received a dime from CDB.
I think it's because it's not local.
And I also think because Richmond and Charleston have them on theirs, because they're the center of Richmond, and I, I think that might have been one reason. I don't need to take everything from Rhode Island RICAN, but you can take $1,000 from it and put it toward domestic violence.
The other thing, too, to bring up, is the Langworthy Field improvements, because we've received the $24,000 from DEM, that, you didn't know that when you asked for $102.
To take the two.
So, we should theoretically, because we're now getting $24,000, we don't need $102 from Langworthy Improvements.
Or do we?
Or do we?
No, that, that is, that is a guesstimate on my part. I don't have the master plan. When I get the master plan, there's going to be a estimated cost associated with all the improvements. I did my best, you know, basically what I did is I, I looked at everything that came in from the outside agencies, I guessed at what I was going to need for a generator, and there was only one other thing left, and I said, well, you know, so I'll throw everything else in Langworthy Field. So, we, we can cut a lot out of, out of that.
Jim, is this, if, if we get the $102 that we're asking for, would that complete the project? I mean, is, is, is that, is that paying till it lasts shovelful?
I don't want to sound like the coach of the U.S. soccer team, but I, I would doubt that we're going to get $102,000, especially because I'm not going to be sending this thing in, I don't believe, with a master plan. To get, you know, that's like 38 studios, I don't have a product, I mean, but I got to kind of beg, I...
I'll turn the question around. How much more do we need to complete the project?
I really don't know. I mean, what, well, what we've talked about with the REC Commission right now is, phase one was going to be an improved playground. If you look at the playground out there right now, it leaves a lot to be desired. So, we're going to bring it right up to where a playground should be, okay? And then we were going to incorporate a walking trail around the perimeter, and incorporate some exercise stations along the way, where you can stop and maybe do a push-up or something like that. So, it would be, it would be something of interest to everyone, and that's very popular. Walking paths now at, at parks are very, very popular. I see everybody carrying coffee, walking, speedwalking and stuff like that. So, that went over very big. So, beyond those items there, I don't know really what else is going to go into the park at this point. We have to go back to the REC Commission and...
I guess my final question would be then, we could cut into this 102 figure without much damage to at least, at least the next year's work on the park?
Absolutely, that's my thinking.
And we could do further work, we could ask for further money next year to do further work. This isn't, we're not looking at a one-year project right here.
No, this is a multi-phased project that will be done over several years, and so that, that's, if you want to, if you want to take some money, that's the place to take it from.
We'll reduce the Langworthy Field improvements to 98 to 28.
Thank you.
And increase the Domestic Violence Resource Center from $1,228 to $5,000.
Sure.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
I know, you very much. Now, I haven't gotten to ask you my questions yet.
Glad to introduce myself. I'm Judy Beatrice, and I'm the Director of Client Services there, but I really appreciate your interest and your generosity to us.
And your last name again?
Beatrice.
Beach?
Beatrice.
Beatrice.
Beatrice?
Beatrice, like the girl's name.
Like a girl's name? Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry, in your question?
That's all right. I would also like to see you in the future think about applying to the town when we do our annual budget. I mentioned it at our workshops, that you're one of the nonprofits that just, we don't fund, and given what you do and who we do fund, out of our town budget, that I would think that you might want to consider applying to the town for some amount, based upon what you do with other towns. It might be a small amount, but it's, nothing's small, and everything helps. So, you might want to consider that, and that's why, because we brought it up and it didn't happen, we knew that, and I'm glad to see you here tonight, because the only way, the only other option that we have in order to fund you is through here. So, that's why we certainly want to give you or request as much as we can for your agency, because you're not getting much from Hopkinton. You're getting people who need your help, and I know that you've been doing it forever. When I was a little kid, I remember, or, when did you start? I wasn't a little kid, I was in my teens.
1997, I think.
No, it was earlier than that.
Oh, the, the agencies, yeah. Oh, I'm talking about, you said when I started, okay. The agency's 30th anniversary was two, two, three years ago, so that...
Yeah, that's what I thought.
I, I can't do the math right in my head right now.
That's all right, that's all right, yeah.
But we've been around for a while.
Okay.
Started out in a small church basement, and have really expanded to have, you know, our residential program, our site, and our court program, so...
No, I mean, it's, I, I mean, if you've lived in town long enough, and a lot of us have, we know that male or female, they need help.
Absolutely, and it's important that you know that we do have male victims.
And I know that you will take them all the way through, court action, police, and everything.
And we also have our educational program, we do a lot of work in Charahoe, so, again, I thank you for your generosity, and I certainly pass that on to the Executive Director about putting in a request for the, your annual budget as well. So, she'll be very pleased when I go back tomorrow morning.
We don't know if anything will happen, but I think you should at least ask.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
I just wanted to let you know, Ms. Beatrice, also, you know, we're just ranking these statewide plans, really the ultimate agency that states, you know, whether you get the money or not, it's not us. We're just putting them in, ranking in by dollars.
Okay.
And rank.
So, you might not get it, but at least we're trying.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Who do you want to talk to next?
Who else is here? Oh, I'm sorry, ma'am.
Good evening, I'm Pat Saint Germain, I'm the Director of Development for the Johnny Cake Center of Westerly.
We love you, too.
And we love you right back. We couldn't do what we do without the help of the town.
Town support.
And I hear the phrase "outside agency," and it feels a bit like we're extended family rather than outside agency, because in addition to our community partners, Warm and Domestic Violence and the other agencies that are applying, we're working to help those who are in need, and we literally can't do it without your help, so let me just say thank you.
And you all see the same people, too.
It's often true.
And your request is $4520?
$4520.
I actually have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
I understand why you want to do this, the ADA accessibility for a bathroom and for the entrance, why didn't you think about that when you first did the building? I mean, I just, it seems like that's the most obvious thing to do, is ADA bathrooms right off the bat, and an entrance, the main entrance certainly should be ADA accessible when you did the building originally, because we were, I mean, I'm happy to support you, but I don't understand why you didn't think of that right off the top.
That's an excellent point.
For me, this lady knows.
I would be happy to introduce my colleague, Liz Pascalini, the Executive Director of the Johnny Cake Center.
Hello. Hi, so our entrance does meet ADA standards, it's just falling into disrepair, and it needs, it needs upgrading. So, we inherited that with the building, like we've inherited our non-compliant bathrooms, and this is part of a multi-stage approach. So, the bathroom that we've identified as one that we can correct, we've expanded and brought that into our footprint in the building. We have two other bathrooms that we have been using, and there's no way to make those ADA compliant based on their size. So, it's just through our growth that we have this opportunity now.
Okay, so you're fixing one, because it already was ADA, which is very nice, and so then you have one bathroom that you can correct.
Yes, and we've just recently added that into our footprint in the building.
It's fine with me, then.
Okay.
Liz, could I ask what our contribution represents as far as a percentage of the total cost?
So, I think it's... It's 7.5%. Last year, we served 222 residents of the town, 83 households, so the amount that we're asking for represents 7.5% of the overall project budget.
Okay, because they have Westerly.
Westerly, Charlestown, Richmond, and Hopkinton.
Which control turns on the fans?
Oh, that one over there.
Jeff, could you hit the fan, one of those buttons?
The thing's the middle one. Nope.
You'll hit it eventually, there you go.
Okay, thank you. I'm fine with the $4520.
Yep, me, too.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Who else is here, from any of the outside agencies, I should say? Yes, ma'am, go up to the podium.
Good evening.
Your name, please.
Molina Lodge for the Community Housing Land Trust, and we come before you every year, you've been very supportive of us in the previous years, so thank you. We provide technical assistance through the form of standardized documents, like Jeff mentioned, we're working with the town to develop your rental rehab program and designing that. We also will provide monitoring service for the people who receive the funds to ensure that they meet the definition of low and moderate income. We have standardized documents that we give to developers, not just Jeff, they're available to any developer in the town, and we've worked with Jim Lamphier, you know, if he had an interested developer and you needed a monitoring agent. We also do a Housing Resource Guide, which we're going to be updating this year, I didn't bring any with me because they're out of date, and that is a statewide booklet that looks at all of the resources pertaining to housing, so who to contact if you have lead issues, landlord-tenant issues. So, we'll be updating that this year, and we expect to have that out at the end of the summer. And we also administer the SHARP program, which is a million-dollar revolving loan fund that non-entitlement communities can apply to, to purchase homes for rehab that you then turn around and will sell to low and moderate income households.
What was the name of that fund?
SHARP.
SHARP.
State Housing Acquisition Rehab Program.
And is Hopkinton part of that, or no?
If you have a property that you identify, that you'd like to purchase, you can apply to it.
I thought you had to, they had identified particular communities that could be part of that, and I didn't know if we were part of that.
You are, non-entitlement community, so you're one of them.
Non-entitlement.
Yes, that's the only requirement. So, you need a nonprofit partner for that, the town can't apply directly, but you could work with Washington County CDC, or South County, any nonprofit in the area.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm fine with what's here, $3,000?
Yeah, that's all right.
Sylvia?
Yes.
Okay.
Is South County Community Action here? Okay, what about Welcome House?
Nope.
Warm Shelter?
We got a call from Russ Potrude, the Executive Director, he had a conflict with another town this evening, so he asked if I would come and on his behalf, thank you for your past support, ask you for your support now, and, again, he apologizes, he had to go to another meeting.
So, it's $11,500?
Combined total?
Yeah.
Yeah, one is the Job Readiness Program, which is an emphasis of the state funding these days, the other one is general operating support for the shelter.
I really wanted to ask him how many of our citizens have gone through the Job Readiness Program, or how many have they placed in a course of a year?
Those residents served should be a component of the application narrative, do you remember seeing it?
Yeah, it should have been on the first page.
Yeah, that's... There's many people there. That's why I think there's not very many people.
I don't know if they're finding jobs.
Yeah, well, I mean, we've never, I don't think we've had people in the program itself, the shelter program, I don't think we've ever had someone from Hopkinton in it, but I understand it needs some support, but the employment, job readiness, I don't think there's a lot of Hopkinton residents. I would expect more than I saw. Johnny Cake generally has more, South County does, Welcome House has, than Warm Shelter.
The one-page summary that I asked everybody to fill out this year, which was a great idea, I stole from Wes Greenwich, by the way, okay? I went to the first public hearing, and Jenny Pickett developed this, I says, uh-oh, my council would love this, so I took it. They claim that 128 persons were served in 2013.
In which program?
It says, the number of Hopkinton residents our program has served over the past four years, and that is listed under the Job Readiness Program. 2013, 128 Hopkinton residents.
Over four years?
No, one year.
Yeah, they gave a 2010, 11, 12, and 13.
So, how many did they actually place?
Oh, place?
How many did, I mean, they're doing job readiness so they can put people in jobs, how many did they actually place?
I'm not sure if anyone's going to have that.
Can't answer that one.
Yeah, I didn't know whether, that's why I was hoping Warm Shelter would be here.
Well, they're not here, so I don't know what we want to do. I'm okay with the amounts listed here, I mean, what else, if we don't give them what we, what's here, I guess we...
Well, they're funded every year.
They are.
You know, they are funded, they're doing good work, we know they serve our people, and they ask for a reasonable amount, so...
I'm okay with the two that they've asked for.
I think all that's left is we need to rank.
Yeah.
Is everybody okay with the 11,5 for these two, I guess? I am.
Sure, 11,5.
Yeah.
We're all combined.
Combined, yeah. Okay. Now, Jim, I think you put these in order from last year, right?
I did.
As far as the rankings.
I did, if you would allow me to just pass out something that might help you as a starting point, might facilitate things. This is how I...
Yeah, we have it.
Looks just like Molly.
That's only a starting point.
I see.
No, it's good.
I'd like Langworthy Field to be first.
I agree.
I just think that should be our number-one interest. Crandall House, to me, is okay as two.
Jim, if that Crandall House gets funded through Sandy, CDBG, is that, do we have enough time to react to fill the hole, or is that not on this?
Well, I don't know what they'll do at the state level. The Hurricane Sandy, as well as this, it's both CDBG, so we're submitted to the same people. So, I'm assuming that they're going to be watching over the whole thing, and that if they see it get funded through Hurricane Sandy, I don't know what they're going to do with this.
Just remove it, essentially.
Possibly, but I might need more. I talked to Laura today up there, I said, you know, I might need more to put that generator, I'm not really sure, that's why I want a little bit more. So, they could, no, if they, if somebody, if another department, let's say, up there is working on this, and independent of another one, they might decide, you know, we, I don't know what they're going to do, they could fund this again, and if they do, we can always request a line item change, okay? We could move some of this into the Langworthy Field if we wanted to, because by that point in time, I'll probably have a master plan with some sort of a cost estimate, I'll have a better handle as to what we need.
Would stay in the town.
Jim, I don't see town-wide rental rehab on this.
Right, that is, the one I gave you a month ago had two separate programs.
Right.
But Jeff tells me that that rental rehab program fits under the rubric of this year.
Okay.
But then, I'm lost. I don't understand, I understand about the rental, but why isn't there a dollar amount for the housing rehab this year?
Because we can apply at any point during the year for whatever funds we need for a particular project. When we get a project in mind, you know, Jeff will have a dollar amount, and he'll apply for the funding. Either, now, if it turns out to be a rental rehab, and keep in mind, we have $40,000...
For the rehab, right?
For rental rehab, rehabbing rental apartments, existing rental apartments, to get them counted in our account as affordable housing.
Oh, no, no, I'm not, I'm talking about housing, town-wide housing rehab.
Right.
Same thing?
The same, the same program, yeah, the same pot of money. So, we don't have to have two separate activities here.
All right.
Yep.
So, who wants what three?
Well, we agreed to Langworthy Field one, is that?
Yeah, Langworthy Field is one.
Crandall two.
Well, we usually put the town operations at first, so you do the town-wide, as the...
So, Crandall is two?
And town-wide housing rehabilitation, three.
Okay.
And I'd like to see us put Domestic Violence Resource in four.
I agree.
And then, I don't have a problem after that.
Okay.
All right, so we shift those around, and then the rest can fall where they currently are.
Yeah, I think it'd be, I'd also like to put Johnny Cake as five, because I'd like Johnny Cake and Domestic Violence right up there.
I'm okay with that.
Keeping track of this, Jim?
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
Yes, next on our agenda, folks, is Town Council President Report. Congratulations to the Charahoe Girls Lacrosse Team, they won the state championship in Division III.